Our next speaker is Ruth Ann Levison. She will be followed by Sandra Cattell, followed by Michael Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor Keller, City Council. It's a pleasure for me to speak to you tonight. It's very fitting that in view of Diane Adler's concern about the Fourth of July fireworks, that in the new amendments to the municipal code, there is something to do with fireworks. I got many, many -- did I say who I was? Ruth Ann Levison. I got many, many emails and phone calls because of the fireworks that took place by one of the residents in San Canyon. The problem, the most serious problem, well, the main thing is that we're in a serious fire hazard district. So response time is the critical thing. Two hours in a fire zone with gigantic fireworks going off just isn't acceptable. It isn't safe. I'm concerned as a Parks Commissioner because of all the interface areas that we have throughout the community. So that's certainly something that needs to be looked at. One of our residents came up with a brilliant idea. One helicopter with a big searchlight and a microphone can whiz back and forth between some of these incidents in some of these really serious areas pretty darn quickly. I know that there were hundreds and hundreds of calls to the Sheriff's Department, but some of them were, you know, the next door neighbor with sparklers or with a fire, you know, smaller things. So there certainly has to be some consideration of where the incident is. So I appreciate all the work that you did, and I was, I'm thrilled that I was able to come and tell you about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth Ann. Sandra?
Good evening again, Sandra Cattell. I'm representing myself. I have just a few quick comments. Mostly are about the July 2nd meeting, which I also agree was very well-run. A few things weren't addressed that were brought up. First of all, regarding the change in the municipal code, I find it interesting, a city with no business license has a requirement for a home business license, also known as a home occupation permit. And I think right now you're missing a golden opportunity for clarity that's going to prevent abuse of this ordinance. It's kind of fuzzy, and I know, Patrick, you thought I was teasing you a lot because of some of the issues that I brought up, but it's an earnest. For example, if you're sick and you telecommute once, do you need a permit? How about if you telecommute once a week to save gas? Do you need a permit then? At what point? Four days a week? Three days a week? At what point would you need a permit? And there are many issues in that area that I think need a little bit of clearing up. Secondly, regarding the home fireworks, as a resident of fire-prone Placerita Canyon with both large and small animals that are terrorized by the home fireworks, I applaud the efforts and I say thank you for trying to control the fireworks. I want to thank our sheriff who responded in Placerita Canyon. I guess they started earlier and I called earlier. Last, I want to say that I do appreciate the city staff, especially Damon Letts and Christina Monde, who spent a lot of extra time explaining the floodplain issues to me. I hope there will not be a wholesale approval of projects under the county standards before the more stringent FEMA standards are adopted. Now with that said, in an era where FEMA standards have been shown to be flawed, that the FEMA standards are merely a starting point when it comes to protecting the lives of citizens and their property. And I hope the city will always have knowledgeable engineers that have the courage to say no to unsafe development, as well as a planning department that will protect our existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Next, Michael Cruz, followed by Cam Nolte Meyer, followed by Bruce McFarland.
Good evening, Mayor Keller, members of the City Council. My name is Michael Cruz and I'm a resident of Santa Clarita. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the Cal Grove Corridor Coalition. The Coalition has asked that for any proposed future development within our city, that the city not allow the developer to rely on the 100-year FEMA floodplain, which only takes into account clean water. And by that, I mean it does not allow for mud and other debris to be taken into account. We ask that the council require stricter standards for all future development as it pertains to flood control and to ensure that any new development will ensure the safety of surrounding areas that it may impact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cam Nolte Meyer?
Cam Nolte Meyer, speaking for the Santa Clarita Organization for Planning and the Environment. Our President Lynn Plambeck attended the meeting, I believe, on July 2nd. She wasn't able to be here tonight. I, in her, on her behalf and the behalf of Scope, attended a meeting today with Damon Letts and Christina Monde. We, of course, feel strongly that there shouldn't be any building in the 100-year floodplain would be the best. And I just read in the paper today that in, there was an editorial that maybe LA City should put a moratorium on all approvals until they can basically get their act together. We have the same concerns with regard to the fact that you are saying you're incorporating the county floodplain maps. And after my discussion with your staff today, it's quite clear that we are going to have a big push on, by some of the developers, that projects are strictly in the floodplain. And if you had a chance to look at the FEMA maps, you will see that is going to create quite a problem for some of your big developments that are proposed. So I think there is going to be a lot of pressure on your planning commission and this council to push those through and give entitlements. And that is what we would not like to see done. And in view of the things that have been approved in this community, River Park, River, what do they call it now? Billage, I believe, which was built in the floodplain, created dominant ridge line and filled in a floodplain, and say, look, isn't this cute? Now we're above and we're not a floodplain. And I checked today and they said, well, FEMA approved that. So it shows that even with FEMA, these things are getting approved here in the city of Santa Clarita. So this is of grave concern to us, especially when we look at the remapping areas that FEMA is doing, San Canyon, Placerita, Sierra Highway, where a lot of development is being proposed. So it is incumbent upon this council perhaps to put a moratorium on until the FEMA maps are considered.
Thank you. Mr. McFarland?
Hi, Bruce McFarland. Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. I actually wanted to talk about fireworks earlier, and I was going to do it in the public participation, but it seems like this is the appropriate place. I'm talking on my behalf and on behalf of my mother, whose house is in some Heritage Oaks and who, where I've actually done some firefighting work three or four times over the 30 years that I've lived here, fire coming within 100 feet of her house. Fireworks cause things to burn, as you well know. In Santa Clarita, a lot of people now are doing these aerial fireworks, street displays. I live in the Saugus area. There were three different aerial displays going on in different directions from my house. And I talked to a deputy sheriff today about that, and they said that there were four citations given and one arrest. So I think the, and I explained why, and they asked why, and they said that unless you catch somebody with the fireworks in their hand, if they drive up and the fireworks are sitting in the center of the street, they have nobody to arrest, they have nobody to give a citation to, they can close them down, but there is no enforcement angle, there's no fear of getting these citations. And making it $500 or $1,000 won't do any good if nobody has a fear of it hitting them. So if there's some way to put some teeth in the enforcement, I think that would go a long way to making this a useful ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. He is our final speaker. And if it pleases my fellow council members, perhaps we could call on Patrick to once again address some of the issues that the community brought forward.
With respect to the wind energy systems, again, we'll continue to take a look at that and we'll work, continue to work with Mr. Jerry Johnson and try and address some of those concerns, and we'll bring that back to the council. With respect to the homeless shelters, there is a state legislation that we're looking at and we're trying to keep our code in compliance with. We're continuing to review that, and as we're updating our housing element, we're going to continue to, we're going to include that amendment in that effort. So we'll take a look at that.
A little more comment on that. Reading the material, I garnered that it, this action does not take away the council's ability to review those sorts of matters, as well as the planning commission.
Right. As of today, it would not correct. In the future, that legislation, we'll have to take a look at it and see how that impacts the council, and we'll bring that up at that time. But as of today, there's no, there's no change under our ordinance to affect that. Any other floodway questions? I'd like to direct those to Christina Monde. If you have any questions on those, I'd like to ask her to come up and address those. She's much more well-versed in those, so if you have any specific questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer those.
Christine, could you come up maybe and address some of the comments made by the public?
Good evening again, Mayor Keller and council members. I apologize earlier. I realized when I was up here, I forgot to introduce myself. I am Christina Monde, Assistant Engineer with Development Services Division. I do want to make it clear that we do have two separate processes going on. We do have the ordinance update, which is before you this evening, and we have the remapping effort, which is a different effort. And the proposed changes and revisions to the ordinance this evening do not make any substantial changes in our floodplains or our creeks or streams in any way. With regard to the floodway maps, we actually did not receive detailed studies from the information that we received from FEMA that we've been using all along, and the LA County floodway maps are something that we've been using in this community. We just never adopted them within our ordinance, so that is what we're attempting to do this evening. With regard to the changes between the two maps, again, there's a lot of very technical and detailed information that I don't think that this is really the forum to go into that. I would be happy to address additional questions with any of the community members, as we've been doing the last couple of weeks. But I think it's important to note that there, the current FEMA maps that we do have are extremely old and very difficult to regulate by, and as a floodplain administrator for the city, we are pretty excited to be getting new, more accurate and reliable maps in the future. But again, with regard to the changes for the floodplain management ordinance this evening, there are no significant impacts to our streams or our waterways.
Mayor Lurie?
Do we have copies of the mapping yet that they're upgrading, FEMA is upgrading, and how they're strengthening their mapping?
Yes, we do. We have received preliminary maps for Sand and Iron Canyon, for Sierra Highway, which is associated with the Mint Canyon flow, and for Placerita Canyon as well.
Okay. So we haven't gotten the entire valley yet?
No, we have not.
Okay. And do we have a timeline on that?
The current studies that FEMA are conducting right now are for Placerita, New Hall, South Fork, and Santa Clara River, and they are currently being studied right now.
Okay. So when they finish that, will we be coming back and readdressing?
Yeah, we're going through a completely different process for those maps. We'll be doing community meetings, public outreach and such.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lurie?
Patrick, back to the homeless shelter issue. This obviously has been one of the most controversial things that this council had to deal with, and it's probably been over a year since the last discussion, which was, followed a lot of community input. And so I just want to clarify that this does not change anything that was already decided, and that anything else that comes from the state, that's going to cause us to go back, really to square one and to reexamine our whole approach to the homeless shelter.
That is correct.
Okay. And, you know, the fireworks situation, I, it's my opinion that it was worse this year than ever. Stuff was higher in the air than I've seen it before in the neighborhood fireworks, and I'm so impressed that we didn't have any fires. So kudos to, I don't know, whoever was watching over us for that. And I don't know if the, if the teeth is in the fine and if that will help justify putting more people on patrol next year and, and, I don't know, handing out some more fines. It's, I think we just got lucky this time. So, you know, Captain LaBerge, if you're listening, that would be a great thing for next year. And then the last thing I just, in the wind generated, really would like just to, to ask that you continue to meet with our resident and talk about things and set a timeline, maybe within, you know, a few months, that we come back and look at it again. I think that, I don't want to put him off, and I think there's a lot of potential there.
Lurie?
On the wind energy, I'd really like staff to look at all the latest technologies out there. If there truly is something that's 18 pounds or something that really is as innocuous or less than your air conditioning unit, they're not quiet either. Could we take a look at that as soon as possible? Because I think that considering the price of fuels and energy, it's really time for people to become self-reliant and be allowed to do that the best, the best way we can facilitate that. I want to talk about fireworks just for a minute. I never have had such a horrible time with fireworks as I did this year. I was up most of the night for three days, listening to M8s go off behind me. And I have eight horses. And it was truly, really miserable, and of course, I've got brush around me, and anybody anywhere within the vicinity of a mile could hear it. And nothing was done. And I'm really tired of hearing about the fact that we don't have ability to do something about it. And I don't, like Lori, I don't know that fines are going to help, because if it's true that you have to see it in their hands, then, then this is just one more thing we're doing that isn't going to actually address it. And if it's not going to address it, Captain LaBerge, you need to figure out how to address it, because we had animals displaced, we had injuries, we had potential fire damage. Almost 10,000 people a year get injured in America. People go blind, people lose their fingers, and in this valley, fire danger's everywhere. And so I'm really disturbed that it got worse. We had this discussion last year, and the year before, and the year before, and it is just not consignable for it to go on in a fire zone area with more and more people, more density. And I know it's fun, but there's nice fireworks shows, and the fire department, there's an agency, when they go out on fire calls, their life's at risk. There's no reason for this to go on. We have helicopters, we have ability to fly over, you have ability to cite people. If we need to be one of those cities that gets one of those sound models in it where it tells you exactly the address that it's going off, then so be it. But this can't go on. It is dangerous for everyone, no matter how much fun it is, it's dangerous. It's got to stop. And I don't think there's anybody up here that wants a fire in their neighborhood, and we certainly don't want it in yours. And so I'd like the city manager to further address this.
I think you're going to have to address the issue. I mean, as long as you have two of our neighboring cities that are selling the fireworks as fundraising, most, many individuals that spoke tonight, but most adults that are parents today, had Safe and Same fireworks when their kids going off. And so when they can drive five minutes down the 126 and buy fireworks, or up to the Antelope Valley and buy fireworks, you can't, I mean, Captain LaBerge doesn't have enough deputies to run around. So I think we almost have to go to our neighboring cities and ask them to enact many of the same, you know, I just came from Salt Lake. I mean, Joanne knows I'm going to say, they, they're legal for seven days in Salt Lake. And I walked in and they're in Walmart, they're in the grocery stores, I mean, there's everywhere. And I'll tell you, I bought them because when I was a little kid, I'm Safe and Same. My, my son's like sitting there like, Dad, we gotta buy, I bought the hundred-dollar huge thing of Safe and Same, and we went out there and set off the little sparklers, and it was like we live in a kid memory, because I can't do here in Santa Cruz as a councilman, because, hey, that doesn't look good, right? But in Salt Lake, I mean, we were flying high and looking great. So the reality is, the parents did it when they're kids, and you can buy them five minutes away. So we got to go to the source and probably work with the city of Fillmore, the city of Lancaster, Palmdale. Because I know I just came from, where I just came from, and many cities across the United States, they're still very illegal, that Safe and Same fireworks. And that's, you're dealing with the whole mindset of people who have done this for decades. And that's what's hard. I don't want to, that's why I don't want to sell out the chief of police. I know he's sitting out there somewhere hiding right now, but it's hard when you have everyone block to block doing this. I mean, it's very difficult. So I think we should really go to the cities that are selling them and say, can we look at your policies for selling, because it's affecting your fire zones of neighboring cities? That's what my suggestion would be.
Thank you, Frank. Marshall?
I think that's a really good suggestion. I agree that this year, they were bigger and louder than ever before. I don't know who's manufacturing these things, but there's a street that every year has fireworks, and they've been annoying, but this year, oh my goodness. I could not believe how high, how loud, and how close they came to the, we live, there's an electrical corridor behind our house, and it was really, truly scary. I mean, if, if any of that would have sparked, it was, would have been awful. And they went on until 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, not this particular street, but I mean, I heard them going off huge, loud. How can a person stand, I don't get how a person standing anywhere near it could, could even stand it. They were so loud. And I don't know what we're going to do, but if people don't have the common courtesy to think of other people with animals and, and in their fire zones, I don't know what we can do anymore. I'm amazed that, that unless we have like cars patrolling every, every single neighborhood, and as soon as they see it, they get over there and put a stop to it. I don't know what else you can do, because people are continuing to buy them. And actually, I received an email that our, one of our, our cities to the north, come on by and buy your fireworks, you know, at our, at our fundraiser. And unless we contact them, they're going to do it again next year, and who knows? Maybe next year they're going to be even louder and, and bigger. So I don't know what we're going to do, but we definitely need to do something. If people don't have the common courtesy to, to understand that their neighbors have a problem with it, then, then I don't know what, what else we can do. I also would like to have us definitely work on the wind technology sooner rather than later, because if these things truly are available and, and people can take advantage of it, I think it would be great sooner rather than later. And I would just like to say, there are varying degrees of floodplain management, and everybody, well, not everybody, there's a few people that say, we keep building in the floodplain. No, we don't. We take very seriously the protection of our river and making sure that development takes place outside of the floodplain. And there's, there's like the 100-foot floodplain, there's, there's beyond that, and we're not building in the river, and I wish people would stop saying that.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this matter with the council? Is there a motion?
Remove the recommended action.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? City Clerk, real call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferry?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I suggest we take a 10-minute break? A 10-minute break, ladies and gentlemen.
10 minutes?
Yes.
Your call.
We're going to new business, item number 13, nomination and appointment of commissioners and panel members. Please, as council, we have one public speaker before we proceed. Mr. Dwayne Hardy.
Good evening, Mayor Keller, council members. Frank, we missed you at the parade. We had a great time, and congratulations to your son. My name is Dwayne Hardy. I'm Commissioner with the Cities Park Recreation and Community Services Commission. Tonight, I'm here speaking on behalf of our Chair, Laura Hauser, who is sitting at home tonight, watching us on TV, because she had strained her back, and so she wasn't able to present this letter herself. I wanted to take this moment to extend a big thank you for allowing me to serve as your Commissioner these past eight years. I love this job, I love this city. Together, along with staff and citizens of this fine city, we have made great strides in the quality of life in our community that will have a lasting impact for generations to come. I especially want to thank you, Mayor Keller, for showing your confidence in me when you first nominated me for a seat on the commission. I sincerely appreciate the freedom you gave me to do, to do my job, yet always made yourself available when I asked for your help. It has been both exciting and rewarding these past eight years, serving as an advocate for our citizens, bringing their needs to the forefront and influencing positive changes as our city grows and develops. Given my passion for this work, you can imagine how difficult it was to decide to step aside at the end of my term this month. The primary reason for stepping aside at this time is that I have embarked on my doctoral studies, a four-year journey. A significant amount of time will be devoted to earning my PhD, along with teaching graduate-level courses at Pepperdine University and Fielding University. Having said all this, I am stepping aside, but I'm not going away. I will still be involved in city projects, I will simply be standing on this side of the dais. I have lived here with my family for 27 years and plan to be here for at least another 27 years. As Chair, I'd like to welcome the newest members of Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. I hope you find your work on the commission as satisfying and rewarding as I have. I look forward to your swearing-in ceremony in September and applauding you loudly. I want to give my sincere thanks to my fellow commissioners, past and present, as well as staff. I have enjoyed working with each of you. We may not have always agreed, but what we have accomplished together on behalf of the council and our citizens is inspiring. To help facilitate the transition from the current commission to the new commission, I have asked staff to make a presentation during the September commission meeting. The purpose of the presentation is to reflect and celebrate the accomplishments related to Parks Recreation and Community Services over the years, get an, get an update on where we are today, and to gain a shared vision of the future. I urge you to adopt the updated master plan that is on your agenda tonight. The master plan will ensure that our Parks and Recreation serves the needs of Santa Clarita residents, and that our open space areas are expanded, protected, and maintained. I hope to see you at the September commission meeting. Sincerely, Laura Hauser, Chair, Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwayne. And I, what a kind letter on behalf of Laura Hauser, and I will tell you, ladies and gentlemen, she has been an absolute delight on Parks and Recreation, a great friend, and more importantly, a great attribute and friend to this community. She's done just incredible work, and of course, we'll look forward to our opportunity to recognize her appropriately at the later meeting. You want to say something, Lurie?
I do, I can.
Anytime you move your microphone around, I know you have something to say.
You know that it's the signal, right? I don't even have to say anything. Good. Thank you, Bobby. Pay attention. I appreciate that.
You're next.
Trying to get your attention. He doesn't want to hear what we have to say.
I think that, I'm sad that Laura couldn't be here today. She, she is an amazing and dedicated lady, and she was so supportive of trails and open space, and she- space, and she committed so much of her time. Uh, she just gave continuously, um, to the valley. She chaired Civ-TAC, Santa Clarita Valley Trails Advisory Group, and did the mapping this last year, as I did, uh, as I chaired and did the mapping before her, ten years before, and I know the job she had to do, it's tireless, and you just spend hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours. Um, she's a successful businesswoman, and she's quite brilliant, and she's a gifted horsewoman, and a great friend, and a lovely lady, and, um, we've lost somebody off the Parks Commission who had a tremendous handle on, um, the history and the continuity of so many projects and so many things, and it is, it is, it goes without saying that we can never thank her enough for the gift she gave, and I just want her to know that , uh, she left some legacy, um, truly, some other people will have a tough road filling those shoes, but we thank her, and any support and time she wants to give, we sure appreciate it. So, I know we'll do something special for her, um, but it will never be enough, so we thank you, Laura Hauser, always.
Thank you, Lorraine. Uh, council, if I may, we have actually, uh, a couple of commissions and a committee position to, to fill this evening. We can do this by taking each council member and, and your recommendation for the positions that are available to you, or we can take each position and then take a, a vote in that matter, and I would, uh, I would take planning commissioner and, uh, discuss those seats that are available, and then make a vote on that, or we can do it all together. What is the pleasure of the council?
I would think each person would wanna appoint the, the commission seats that they wanna appoint.
Well, and they do, and they'll, those individuals will make their discussion and, and supportive comments for the rest of the council.
However you wanna do it.
Yeah, I just, I assume that the person would-
Well, no, that, that doesn't change, I'm just saying, do you wanna take a single vote for each, each position?
One vote for all at one time, that's all he's asking.
Oh, it, it doesn't matter, I thought you said you wanted us to give our recommendations.
Well, and I do. You have to do that.
And once you recommend it, we'll make one recommendation for all of them in one vote, instead of eight separate votes.
So, if you just call?
Well, why don't we do it this way, what, if you don't, if you're comfortable with this, let's take the planning commission, we'll make the recommendations, we'll take a vote, and then go to the Parks Commission, okay? And, Lori, I believe you have a position for the planning commission.
I do, Mayor, and-
Requesting comments?
Yes. Um, my nomination for the planning commission is DeeDee Jacobson. DeeDee's a sixteen-year resident of Santa Clarita, she is a former talent agent and who is now a mom of a teenager, and who volunteers in many capacities for our schools, including serving as the PTSA president at Rio Norte Junior High School, and as a representative on the Hart District's Advisory Committee, and on their parent communications council, as well as a member of the Betty Ferguson Foundation Advisory Council. She is smart, passionate, has a positive attitude, and raises the bar with every organization and group that she gets involved with. Anyone will, who knows her will tell you, among other things, that DeeDee is a bundle of energy. I know that DeeDee will listen attentively, ask great questions, demand thorough and honest answers, and be an excellent voice for our community in all areas of planning and development.
Thank you, Lori. And if I may, before I make my recommendation, I wanna make comment about Mike Berger. Mike Berger has been a planning commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, I believe, he and I worked together when I was on the planning commission, and that was ninety-eight through two thousand. And, uh, many of you, I'm sure, is no stranger to most of the people in the room, Mike Berger has been a leader in this community for years. What a stellar individual, what a compliment to this community this man has been. And, uh, and as Lorraine was commenting and I about Laura Hauser, Mike Berger's right up there. What a phenomenal individual, and we all can be very appreciative of his service to this community for so many years. Having said that, uh, for the, the last four years, Bill Kennedy has been my selection for the planning commission. And, uh, as I reflect back, ladies and gentlemen, on the service that Bill Kennedy has done on the planning commission, I just, I don't know why I could ask for anything more, I don't know how the city and the citizens could ask for anything more, and a dedicated individual that has given just incredible service, tremendous wisdom and knowledge, very articulate, and subsequently, uh, he reapplied, and I would like to, uh, make my nomination for Bill Kennedy for the vacancy in that seat, and, and ask him to once again serve a four-year period. Is there any discussion about Lori's recommendation or mine for the position of planning commissioner, fellow councilmembers? Have a, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferry?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and congratulations to those two individuals. At this time, we will move now to the Parks Recreation and Community Services position, uh, I believe we have three that are available, and if I may, Frank, I will go to you first.
I just wanna say what an outstanding field of applicants it came. I know personally, seven of these individuals that are amazing, uh, Kevin Schaller, who's on the Blue Room Task Force, Linda Labmorn, who worked for Commerce McKean's office, uh, Ann Kerman, who worked for the, uh, Educational Alliance, did a great job, Steve Jones, who's my neighbor, uh, real evolved with adult, um, sports here, Dwayne Hardy, uh, Matt Halliday, who I just spent a week with, he, and his son and my son are best friends, and Janelle Cornell, uh, along with the rest of the candidates. Um, I know I personally, when I choose candidates, if you look back, or I just wrote down the history of my commissioners, uh, Pat Maduno, former mayor of the city of San Fernando, uh, now LA Planning Commissioner, Tim Burkhardt, President of Operations of the Six Flags, Kim Wooton, former SCVA PTA President, Paula Perez, who's now, I think, the state commissioner for AYSO Soccer, uh, Lori Ender, councilmember. Um, I pick intelligent, bright, hardworking people, and I stay out of their way. I absolutely just let them do their job, and in that vein, I chose someone who, uh, I think is just nail, she's absolutely intelligent, she's hardworking, and that's Janelle Cornell. And Janelle, I've been with now for six years, I've seen her, for hundreds of kids, be the conduit for teenagers between teens talking to her and their parents, when it's come from everything from loneliness, depression, divorce, alcohol, drug issues, I've seen her drive kids to, uh, get their teeth fixed from someone that's donated teeth being fixed. Uh, I've seen her, you know, absolutely take the money out of her wallet to hand over for kids that don't have lunch that day, uh, kids that are lonely, she befriends them. Um, she has two young kids that went through the youth sports program, you couldn't ask for someone that's gonna be up here on this, on this panel and be a better teen advocate and youth advocate, so with that, I put forward Janelle Cornell.
Thank you, Frank. Lori, I believe you have a position also.
Yes, I do, I'd like to nominate Matt Halliday. Um, and his son is my son's best friend, Frank, so there. Um, Matt's a fourteen-year resident of Santa Clarita, and he wears a lot of different hats, including being vice president of the company he works for, as well as a husband and father of three teenagers, but most people in town who recognize him will recognize him as Coach Halliday. Matt has coached football, baseball, softball, and basketball, and has been in the stands watching his kids play soccer, hockey, volleyball, and swimming. He served as the athletic director for the Santa Clarita Valley Athletic Association's Warrior Football Program, and has worked closely with our city staff in juggling field reservations and demands for field space. Matt is not just a good candidate for the Parks Commission, he's the ideal candidate. He sees the bigger picture, he's a true problem solver, and loves people, particularly kids. The Parks Recreation and Community Services Department is one of the shining stars in the city of Santa Clarita, and Matt will be a shining addition to their commission.
Thank you, Lori, and I also have a vacancy, that one created by Laura Hauser, and, uh, I would like to go to a proven, um, leader and participant in our community, and that's Mr. Dwayne Hardy. He has served, uh, for a number of years, uh, on the Parks Recreation, uh, panel, and has just done incredible work. Not only has he worked effectively with this city, uh, on the commission, but he has also been a very strong participant with a number of philanthropic organizations, the seniors active with their, our Fourth of July Parade every year, and the list goes on and on. But, uh, I, he, he's a proven quantity and quality here in this community, and I have great pleasure in, in requesting that, uh, Mr. Dwayne Hardy, uh, remains on the Parks, uh, Commission. Is there any further discussion by the part of the, uh, council? Is there a motion?
Move the recommended action?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, may we have roll call, please?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And congratulations to-
Mayor, can I recommend that we just maybe give each person a minute to introduce themselves, and just maybe let members of the community or staff just introduce themselves real quick at the mic and just say hello?
Well, we have one more.
Could we do that after we finish the next, uh, part, and then we'll do that? That, that would be excellent, thank you, Frank, it's a good suggestion. Okay, now we will move on to the, uh, the final, uh, panel, and that is the one for Open Space Preservation District Financial Accountability and Audit Panel. And I believe that there are one, two, three positions open in that category, and if I may, Lori, I'll go to you first.
Okay, uh, this, this was an easy one for me, I would like to nominate Alan Firdman and ask that he continue in that position. I, I have to share that, in his application, he wrote, "I have always believed that individuals who are willing to give back to the community by volunteering their services help make this a great place to live." And that really just sums Al up perfectly. Um, I, I couldn't agree more, and that's why you make this community such a wonderful place. Um, I'm thrilled that you wanna stay doing this, and I wish I would've thought of it first to have you on here, but since it wasn't my first choice, uh, a year ago, I'm so happy I can do it now.
Thank you, Lori. Lorraine?
Uh, you go.
No, I'm the mayor, I have, I get to determine those things.
Well, I don't wanna go with that. Wow! Well, now, now we know who the captain is. All right, um, I would like to nominate Jeff Williamson.
Any further comment?
Nope.
Short and sweet. Okay, and thank you. I, uh, had nominated, uh, when the committee or panel was first put together, uh, Spence Leifdale, and, uh, I see Spence is out here with us this evening. Uh, he just got there. Uh, the man hasn't had a chance to, uh, to really, uh, flex his muscles yet, so, uh, I, I know Spence is gonna do a tremendous job, and, uh, I would like to keep him in his position, and, uh, and I know that, uh, that committee is gonna do very well under his participation and leadership. Okay, that accounts for the three positions there, is there a motion?
Move the recommended action?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, roll call please.
Thank you. Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, Frank, let's, uh, let's use your recommendation, I like it, uh, would you introduce, uh, your appointment, please?
Yes, for park commissioner, if Ms. Janelle Cornell could please come up, introduce yourself, and, by the way, she's really tiny, so hey, Dad, you'll be all, you're a giant, I'll stand over her.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess I should start by introducing myself, my name's Janelle Cornell, and I've been married to my husband Ted for twenty-nine years, and we have lived in Santa Clarita for almost twelve years. As a parent of two grown sons, both of whom have participated in many city youth sports programs and activities, I feel I have firsthand knowledge of the wants and needs of adults and children when it comes to leisure time activities. Also, my job working with young people at both a public and private school for the past six years have shown me the importance of programs and facilities for parents as well as children, and more importantly, what can happen in the lives of these children when there are no positive opportunities for them. My hope in working as a parks commissioner is to continue the many positive programs that our city now sponsors, as well as support opportunities for new facilities and activities that help make our city such a wonderful place to live in. We have all benefited because of those who have come before us and embraced the vision of Santa Clarita as it is today, and I feel so fortunate to be able to give something back to ensure this wonderful quality of life for those who, in the future, will choose to make this city their home. Thank you.
Thank you for those very fine remarks, appreciate it very much. Uh, Lori?
Yes, Matt and Joanne and Al, will you guys come up? And I didn't tell them they were talking, so they weren't, I'm not sorry, Joanne, that was a bad habit, uh, DeeDee and Matt and Al, yeah. They weren't expecting to say anything, but they'll wing it. None of them are, have ever been at a loss for words, so.
My name is Matt Halliday, and I wanna, uh, address, uh, Mayor Keller and the members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to participate on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Lori, thank you for thinking of me and, and recommending me for this position. Uh, since it's, I'm only moments on, on the position, I really don't have a lot that I can say and contribute at this time, other than I'd like to pick up the fireworks issue again, and say that, uh, any state that legally sells fireworks to Frank Ferry really ought to reconsider their standpoint there. And, uh, obviously, you can see what happens when a grown man buys fireworks, and that's a dangerous position. Uh, seriously, you know, really, the fireworks issue, I, I really think that ought to be a state-level law, that fireworks ought to be completely legal in the state. To sell small explosives to grownups who don't know how to handle them, to me, is just a complete mistake. Uh, but I look forward to working with the city council and the other members of the Parks and Recreation Committee, and continuing the strong efforts to develop, uh, strong areas for, uh, kids to play, open space for people to use throughout the days, uh, of the week, um, and, uh, promoting a strong growth with the youth, uh, in, in the program and in, in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, DeeDee Jacobson. I just wanna thank Lori for, uh, giving me this opportunity along with the council. Um, I'm very excited to be serving the community in, uh, in this capacity. Um, I've volunteered for many years with the PTA, and, um, I take all of my jobs very seriously, from being president at Rio Norte to chaperoning twelve thirteen-year-old girls at, in Reno at National Volleyball Festival last week. Um, so, I am very excited to be working with the other planning commissioners, I know Diane Troutman very well, I've worked with her for many years, uh, with PTA, and I've met Tim Burkhardt, so, uh, I have a lot to learn, I will be asking city staff a lot of questions, but, uh, again, I'm not afraid, if I don't understand something, I'll be knocking on your door. Uh, so, thank you so much, and I'm very, very excited.
Thank you.
Drugs is a price on top of the price, you pay for it with money, you pay for something you could've had, then you pay for it out of your life.
Heroin will kill you and crack will bring you to your knees, and crack brought me to my knees.
I'm gonna stay with the program I've recovered, and I'm not gonna give up, I'm just not gonna give up.
Santa Clarita is Southern California's entertainment destination, just minutes from LA. Santa Clarita's year-round weather means you can enjoy year-round fun, like thrilling coasters and water parks, premium shopping, destination day spas, fine dining, outdoor adventure, and major events such as wine festivals, golf tournaments, and the Cowboy Festival. Santa Clarita, always in season.